The time is 6:29. I will now call the March 20, 2024 meeting of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence to order. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we pray for your presence in this meeting as we do the business of the city. We pray that you continue to watch over our city, the constituents that live in our city, and the public safety officers and employees that serve in our city every day. Lord, we'd like to take this moment for silence in recognition of the hard work, service, dedication to our community, to our city, and to our state that was provided by Senator Bro. She has gone on to be in your midst, and we just pray for peace for her family and this community, and we thank you for giving her to us to lead, to guide, to mentor, and to serve for all the years that she was with us. Please bow your head and close your eyes for a moment of silence in recognition for a life well-lived by Senator Bro.
Let the record reflect that there are nine councilors present and that we have a quorum. This meeting has been properly noticed in accordance with the Indiana Open Door Law. Copies of the agenda are located at the back of the meeting room. Also, if any citizens wishing to speak under Citizens Comments later in the agenda, please sign in using the sign-in sheet located in the back of the room. Next on the agenda is the ratification of contracts. We will present these contracts to the Finance Committee. Any discussion? The bills for these contracts will be paid. Next on the agenda will be comments of the council members and special recognitions or resolutions. Do any members have any comments?
Madam President, I have two. I would like to welcome Dunkin' Donuts to the Lawrence family on Pendleton Pike. I believe the address is 9910 Pendleton Pike. Really appreciate Dunkin' Donuts coming into the city of Lawrence. And then I have a complaint from one of my constituents who has an industrial park at 9230 Harrison Park Court. It's Foam Craft, Inc., and they have been having trouble with the semis going in and out of their business because of cars parking on the edge of the street. And they were asking the council to see if they can look into no parking signs for that area. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Freeman.
I have three comments. I'll make them quickly. First off, I want to thank the City of Lawrence's first responders who dealt quickly and professionally with the dog attack on Twickenham Drive on March 8. It is a comfort to know that the Lawrence Police Department and Animal Control are able to spring into action so speedily. Thank you. Secondly, Ms. Kristin in Kensington Farms has lobbied for a four-way stop sign at Kensworth Drive and Chadworth to reduce speeding in the neighborhood. I'm asking Madam President to send this to the Code Committee. And thirdly, so excited about the spring fling at the community park on Saturday, March 30, starting at 9:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Massur. Are there any other recognitions? Councilor Crone?
I just have one. Thank you. Last weekend, there was a mass shooting at Land Sharks nightclub in Broad Ripple. Six people were shot and one succumbed to his injuries. His name was Tim Brown. He was a resident of Lawrence for some time. I didn't know him, but I learned he graduated from Lawrence North and had worked at Lawrence Central as an instructional assistant and a wrestling coach. And since the weekend, I have seen so many of my colleagues and my students in the school district share their memories of him on social media. His loss is felt deeply in Lawrence. His friend Nick said this about Tim. Tim lived in thankfulness. Tim lived in gratitude. Tim lived in humility, and that's something we can all use. I just want to say peace to his family and his friends. I know his loss is felt greatly here in Lawrence, and I would like a moment of silence for him.
Thank you, Councilor Crone. Are there any other recognitions? Thank you. The next agenda item is the approval of minutes of the regular meeting on March 4, 2024. Are there any questions or corrections to the meeting minutes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilor Chavis and Councilor Kramer. Next on the agenda is the... Is there a discussion? We will now proceed to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next on the agenda item is the signing of vouchers, approval of claims, and authorization of payment. Do we have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Councilor Freeman. Councilor Jennings?
Switch your signs. Switch your signs.
Yeah, your signs. Any further discussions? All those in favor, let's take a vote. All those in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
The vote is unanimous. Next on the agenda is unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. We will now go to new business. Proposal number one, 2024, to amend the Lawrence Municipal Code of Ordinances regarding common council approval on expenditures of professional service contracts. Madam Clerk, would you please read the title of the proposal into the record?
Proposal number one, 2024, an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of Lawrence, Indiana, amending Title I, Article I, Chapter II, Section 12 of the Municipal Code Regarding Common Council Approval of Expenditures of Professional Service Contracts.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On behalf of the Common Council, I am referring Proposal Number One, 2024, to the Administration, Budget, and Finance Committee for consideration and recommendations. Next on the agenda, under New Business, a presentation from Oscar Gutierrez of Boundary Consulting. Mr. Gutierrez, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Madam President, for the record, Oscar Gutierrez, 2185 Henges Drive, Westfield, Indiana. I will give it two seconds to see if we can get the presentation pulled up here. Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I'll just say next page, and we'll try to go along. That way, the council can follow along. Hopefully, you guys had a chance to potentially review this prior to this meeting. So Boundary Consulting, next page, next couple. Next one. So Boundary Consulting, we're a registered municipal advisor. What that means is that we're regulated by three entities, the SEC, MSRB, and FINRA. We are headquartered in Hamilton County, and we're currently the only, next page, municipal advisor that is both a veteran-owned company and a minority-owned company. We carry several other certifications. So, next page. You may be asking yourselves, what is a municipal advisor? A municipal advisor is very similar to a financial advisor for an individual. So we have fiduciary responsibility to our client. What that means is we have to put our best interests ahead, or the best interests of our clients, ahead of ours. So we deal in the world of securities. We issue municipal bonds on behalf of entities. So similar to your personal financial advisor that's a Series VII and may or may not have fiduciary responsibility, we do have responsibility. Next page.
Good show. You see where some slides show right there? Can I present? Okay, we'll be welcomed. Next page.
Yes, please. So before that, you had our bios. So I'm happy to be back where I started my municipal career. Before entering into the municipal space, I was in public finances at the federal level. The Defense Finance and Accounting Center brought me here maybe 14, 15 years ago in '09. I can't do, I mean, I shouldn't say I can't do math, but I wasn't prepared to do that math. And began working for the City of Lawrence a long time ago. Councilwoman Freeman and Councilwoman Giles, both were a part of those administrations when I was here, and left here sadly to go and help Mayor Fatness as he was transitioning from a town to a city, where I spent the remaining of my municipal time with him until the end of 2017. So after that, we began our company, and we have been helping municipalities across the state. What you have before you is some of our transactions that we recently had. As you can tell, we are helping municipalities all across the state, to include Hamilton County, Warwick County. We have done a couple of non-municipal clients such as Country Kitchen and Polk Stables. So there are times where certain entities will ask for our help, and we do it at a very discounted rate just because we believe in the mission that they're serving. Next page. So the reason I'm here today is to present the potential strategy for the city of Lawrence. I felt that bringing this to you early was important, and what I've found is successful with most of the entities that we have been working with over the years is the communication between the administration and the council. And oftentimes, that communication is not there, a lot of mistrust happens. So the sooner we can bring something before you, get your buy-in, and then start asking questions and ask tough questions. I mean, I expect you to. You guys will have my contact and happy to go over this. But what we're going to cover here revolves around property taxes. Next page. So like most entities around the state, communities have two main sources of income, property taxes and income taxes. And the things that we're bringing before you will affect both. Next page. So a few terms that you'll hear me say, and for a lot of you guys that may be new to municipal government, net assessed value is all the values in the city that are net of any deductions. For example, if you have a mortgage deduction or a homestead deduction, that gets netted out of the values. Anything that may be TIFT is not netted out of that. Your certified levy is the amount of money the city needs to operate. So that levy gets put against a tax rate. Next page. So what you typically see on your tax bill is based on the tax rate that you have to pay, and that usually goes in cents, and we're going to cover that in a little bit. But as Lawrence continues to grow, and there's growth happening, it may not be getting capped right now because it's all within the Four Harrison Reuse authority currently, which that will eventually come off. But there is growth coming because it's not going to just stay within the fort. It's going to start spreading. Councilwoman Freeman brought up Dunkin' Donuts, right? I mean, people are going to start moving to the city. Your local chamber should begin, or has probably seen just the growth just within the fort and others come. So when the assessed value of the city goes up, the tax rate goes down because now you have a higher value to tax across people, and therefore that rate goes down. Vice versa, if there's communities like Gary, Indiana, and Muncie, who have seen the opposite, where their assessed values have gone down, therefore their tax rates have gone up. Next page, please. So it matters how much assessed value you have. For roughly the same amount of cents, and actually Marion County's rate is lower, you know, it's not too far from Lawrence, you know, you are generating a lot more dollars. So the City of Lawrence currently collects roughly $15 million from property taxes imposed on its residents. Next page, please. So over the last few years, some people might have come to at least, and I believe Councilman Wells and Councilwoman Chavis were incumbents. So over the last few years, you guys might have had people saying to you, why are you raising my tax bill? And I would say, we didn't raise your tax, but we actually lowered taxes. However, the values of properties went up, and that is something that happened nationally. So if the value of your property goes up, even if your tax rate goes down, unless it went down proportionately, your taxes might still be higher because the value of your home went up. Now, that happened nationally, statewide, you know, it's been happening. COVID changed a lot of things for people. The US generation needing a place to live has changed a lot of the values around homes. Next page, please. So again, some of the things I was saying, the demand for housing post-2008 has been strong. There's been limited construction around homes because of values in the post-2008 crash, and because there was historical low rates, now that they're going up, people are not selling their homes. So the stock for homes is low, therefore the values are up, and people's taxes are slightly higher. Next page, please. So the thing that I want to focus on today is that the value, the net assessed value of the city of Lawrence from 2019 to today, as I mentioned, has gone up, however, which caused the tax rate to go down. And this is the strategy that most schools, I don't have it in front of me, and I'm not, and I can't speak for Lawrence schools, but most schools around the state have been doing this for decades, which is they maintain their tax rate flat. And the reason they maintain it flat, it is the same strategy that places like Fishers, Westfield, and others try to maintain a flat tax rate is because despite the lowering of taxes, I don't know how many thank-you cards Councilwoman Chavis or Councilman Wells you received thanking you for a cent or two going down. If you guys had some thank-yous, kudos to you, but most people don't ever really think about it. And part of the reason for that is, is that because of the legislature that Mitch Danz introduced almost 15 years ago, or longer, I'm getting old. Long time ago, let's say that. It caps everybody at 1%. So currently, a lot of your residents are likely capped at the 1% of their value. So this may or may not have an effect on them, and I can't speak for every person that you represent. A vast majority of them are likely at the 1% tax cap of the value of their home. So if you look at those rates, you will notice that in 2019, the rate was 78 cents, and today you are at 69 cents, you know, roughly around 70 cents, if you give or take. And that rate is what determines how much money you bring into the city. So the rate that you can grow each year, and I shouldn't say the rate, but your levy, the amount that you actually collect, the state mandates how much you can grow. And it's usually based on the non-farm tax income formula, which is roughly between 3% and 6% historically. Last year was 4%. There was legislature this year to say we were going to cap it at 4, and they said, no, we're not going to cap it. We're still waiting for the state to tell us what the cap will be. But you're typically capped on how much money you can receive. And if that cap is 4%, and inflation is 8%, and you have a growing population, and you have to keep up with salaries for police and fire to not lose them to the other units, which you potentially could or could not be, it makes it very difficult for municipalities to keep up because simply their budget is constrained by that 4% growth. So there has to be ways to work around those issues. And what I hope to propose here will help give you guys some informed decision on potentially some steps to take. On there, I have some local tax rates of some comparable. Within Marion County, you'll see that Beech Grove, they're currently taxing the residents at $1.38, Speedway at $1.11, Lawrence at 69 cents, and Southport, very low, 55 cents, although Southport and Lawrence are very, very different municipalities. I would say Beech Grove is a more comparable unit than the others. So what I was asked by the administration, like, well, give us some more comparables. How are our peers doing? Next page, please. And it was difficult, you know, the state's a big state, so how do you pick peers? And we noticed that there was a lot of mayors that were flipped, just like Mayor Whitfield. It went from R to D. So we said, well, which ones are the peers that she's going to be benchmarking herself to? Because you got to benchmark yourself to somebody, and it's difficult to just pick any given city. You can do it by population, you can do it by AV, you could do it by demographics. I mean, we can slice it a million ways, so this is our best shot to find a peer group. And then we looked at those cities, which the city of Lawrence is the 22nd largest city in the state. It also includes West Lafayette, which is the 23rd, but then you also go to a couple smaller ones and a couple bigger ones. We asked Mayor Whitfield, well, who would you like to benchmark yourself to? And she said, well, I hear Mishawaka is one that we should benchmark ourselves to, and I have a relationship, and I like how Noblesville is operating. So let's benchmark those as well. So we took their tax rates for 2024, and we found out that the city of Mishawaka is at $2, South Bend, almost $3, Noblesville, $1.10, and so forth. So as you can see, the city of Lawrence's tax rate is a little constrained at 69 cents. I'm not advocating bringing it up, but I'm saying that those five cents could make a huge difference in the way that the city can operate. And it's not a gross overstatement of what other people are not doing. If you were to move up to, let's say, 75 cents, you would still be almost eight cents lower than the next city to you, which would be West Lafayette. Next page, please. So the plan that we have before you is one that we had to take some things into consideration. If the city continues to grow at a 5% rate, which historically it has, you see the growth factor on there in parentheses, and in 2022, it grew by 6%, and '23, it grew by 18%, and then it went back down to roughly 5. So we felt that a 5% increase based on some of the things that are coming in line was a reasonable number to expect growth for the city. And then we said, your operating levy, which is the very first line under categories, you could see that it has remained pretty steady, and that's because that is the one that gets capped by the 4% that the state has mandated. We utilize a 5% growth here, which we will get verification from the state on what that will be here soon. And the next one is what is called the CUMCAP fund. The CUMCAP fund can be set at .05 cents. What that would do is the CUMCAP fund lives outside of that maximum. So if you were to establish a CUMCAP fund at the maximum rate of .05, which you currently have it at half of that, you would be able to generate more dollars for the city to be used towards capital. It has to be used towards capital. You can't use it for salaries, you can't use it for contracts. It has to be capital improvements. So if you were to maximize that fund by the .05, and you have, you used to have a deadline of end of April, which has been moved up to the end of May. So this year, you have until the end of May, and that's why we're bringing this for you because you're going to have a short timeline to potentially do this. Now, you can decide to establish it in the next 60 days, but you do not have to fund it during budget season. So I want to make sure that you guys are aware that just by simply giving yourselves the ability to do it, doesn't mean that come budget season, you don't say, you guys may get feedback from the public, say, you know, you guys are, this is a terrible idea, don't do it. Fine, don't do it, but don't take the option away from yourselves from doing it. And you only have until the end of May to do it, and there's a lot of steps that you have to go through. Legal counsel, I'm sure, is happy to cover all that with you. I'm not here to give any legal advice or on timelines, just simply to advocate for increasing the CUMCAP fund. In addition to that, the city, over the last few years, and I don't know how far back this goes, not having been an advisor to the city prior, it appears that because the relationship between the administration and the council, and I'm not putting blame on one or the other, that's not what I'm, please don't mistake that, I'm simply saying because the relationships between both the administration and the fiscal body were not there, which is what we're trying to hope to repair here and have some trust, is there was not, there were no lines being created under the debt service. So I said, you're capped by 4%, and you can go up a little bit for the CUMCAP fund. And what every other community, including schools, do is they put their capital needs, vehicles, buildings, repairs of parks, as a debt service line. Debt service lives outside of both of those. So you can actually increase it up. There are two rules here, and if we can go back two slides here. Thank you. You have what is called a constitutional debt limit. The General Assembly stated that anybody can borrow money with no remonstrance, meaning that they give the fiscal body the option to do this, but it has to be 1/3 of your net assessed value, and then you take 2% of that. So for the city, currently, you have a $13 million GEO capacity, is what people call it. It's a capacity to borrow without any remonstrance. There are units like Carmel, who, good, bad, indifferent, and again, I'm not here to advocate for other cities, you wonder, how do they go over the 2%? They borrow almost every week. I'm not saying, I'm on the record, I'm not saying that. It may appear to some as that. It is because they do what is called lease financing. Legally, it's not borrowing if you're leasing. So there's a whole mechanism, it's a legal mechanism, and it allows them to go over that list limits. But what we're proposing is that because the administration, and we can go back a couple more now, because the administration and the council did not always see eye to eye, the administration was forced to continue to buy vehicles, they had to continue to buy equipment for public safety, for Streets Department, and they had to pay for it out of the operational budget. When you pay for it out of your operational budget, it puts a constraint on what you use that operational budget for. use that operational budget for. If I'm paying for vehicles, I can't give salary increases. I can't pay for retirements. So that creates a constraint on the city. What we are hoping to suggest here is that the capital needs for the city have been going up every year, so they've been deferring, you know, they've been leasing and leasing more vehicles and paying for it out of your operating budget. We're suggesting is doing a general obligation bond to take the existing debt and creating a new debt line to relieve pressure from the operating budget. I'm not going to recommend how the relief gets appropriated. That is your job, and it's the job of the administration to present to you the best way to do it. I'm simply presenting options to provide relief to the city. In addition to that, if the CUM cap is established, and it hopefully will, you see that it'll go up by almost $600,000 in revenue to the city that cannot be used towards capital. Our initial thought, and again, we are not policymakers, you and the administration are, is that the CUM cap fund could be used in the future to fund those capital needs that are currently being borrowed against and paid for operations. It could be used for something else. Again, I'm not, I don't make policy, I don't create the budget for the fiscal body, but it could provide some relief. And I always say that the CUM cap fund is a two-for-one, and here's why. Local income taxes, when distributed to units, is not based on what people pay into the city. So the income taxes from the city of Lawrence go into a big pot of money at the county. And then the county has a formula dictated by the state that states that your distribution is based on your levy minus your debt levy. Because otherwise, units like, again, and I'm not saying anything negative about Carmel, Carmel's a beautiful community, and don't mistake that, but they have a lot of debt, so they wouldn't be rewarded for all of that debt. So you have to net that out. So if you increase your levy by increasing the CUM cap fund, you'll also receive additional income tax dollars back to the city. Our projections are that it would be roughly an additional $300,000 split between your general shares and your general certified shares and roughly $150,000 towards public safety income tax, which has to be used for public safety. What we are targeting is that 75 cents, so if you notice there, so we would, the debt service levy would increase by starting to make payments on the vehicles that you currently have now out of that debt service, and then the CUM cap fund would be increased. Now, if you are removing your obligations from the budget next, this year and next year, that's going to allow you to appropriate that money elsewhere, again. And our goal is that for future equipment needs, that that could be a potential source to look at as you go through the budget process. But administration, I'm not speaking for the administration, this is simply best practices from other communities that I'm presenting before you. And so, wrap this up, and I've talked too long, and thank you for staying awake. This is the most boring topic, and I, kudos to all of you for allowing me to blab. I can pause here, allow you guys to ask questions in public, if you feel comfortable. I'm available to go down any rabbit hole that you would like, and I'll stop there and let you.
I want to go back to the rate, tax rate. I got questions about, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Questions about the tax rate.
Absolutely.
Like two slides back, I think. Because it's been our practice, because no matter how you spin it, we're raising taxes.
You are raising taxes. We're calling this a tax restoration, but you are.
A tax increase.
Yes, sir.
And so we have tried to avoid a tax increase in Lawrence for quite some time. And what we've always done to keep to, but I do understand that, and I can't see it well, but if I'm kind of going off my head and not more seeing, so correct me up there.
Might be a max.
That rate dropped, when did the rate drop to give us that space? It wasn't that long ago, right?
Yeah, so, Madam Clerk, I'm not sure if you can maximum, at the bottom right-hand corner right there, you can, you can probably bring it up a little bit more, other way?
Going down.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I have the.
So it was what, 20?
So 20, between 2019, it's gone, it's kind of jumped around a little bit, and '21, it jumped back up, so something happened in '21. Again, I wasn't here, I can't, but it's a little sporadic.
Right. And so where I'm getting at is what we tried to do as practice is, I understand where you're going now that we have that room, and it's not a big jump, and there's so much space there that wasn't really necessarily there before.
Yeah, and so there's a second step to that, which is, once you get to 75, keep it at 75. Pick a line, you know, because otherwise, it's going to continue to go down, and.
Because our values, if our values continue to go up.
Yeah, and if you keep going down, you're just not keeping up with your.
Can I tell you a story that's of concern?
Yes, sir.
And it just came up, really, this really just came up for me. Tell you guys some of my personal business publicly, but it's a story of Lawrence. I bought my house here in Lawrence in 2015. I paid less, I paid less for my house than the previous owner did. But now, when you look at the assessed value of my house, it's worth 100, I mean, not the assessed value, but the Zillow value, that's what, it's worth 100 grand more today than it was in 2015. But the seller that I bought the house from, like I said, again, we went back and forth, he didn't want to sell me the house because he lived there literally for like 15 years and had to sell the house to me for like 15 grand less than what he paid for. So I just want to make, because of those things, and some of us was here when we saw the bottom end fall out in Kensington Farms. We were here. We were the people that built houses in 2000 in Kensington Farms and then saw, and, you know, 12 years later, man, it was, we were on the verge of becoming the projects. Stop me when I'm starting lying, okay?
I lived in Kensington Farms. I was a resident in Kensington Farms.
Do you remember when it happened? So even though we're getting grayer, it just, I now know things are possible. So I just want to throw out that that is the reason why some of us that's been on this council didn't make that jump and stayed conservative for our residents, because we weren't sure if we were going to have the growth of Hamilton County.
And that's a valid point, Counselor, and well taken. I will say that this body can only control a small portion of the overall tax rate, and the overall tax rate for.
You're going right into what I'm going to ask you next. You're feeding right into it, because we have a school district that just put a big tax increase on our residents.
So.
And beat us to the punch on the.
Yeah, so if you don't hold the line, the other units will. Yeah, so if you don't hold the line, that's why I said, what's a reasonable number, the administration said, what, you know, if the highest was 78, you know, just average out, it's at 75, just hold the line, hold the line, don't raise taxes, don't lower taxes, just hold it.
But we didn't, so you're saying it dropped because we thought, we thought we were spending, every time a bond would sunset, the administration would come with a new bond and try to keep the previous administration, and try to keep the rate the same, so we didn't increase, but we were trying not to drop. So that's why I was trying to figure out.
Yeah.
If the major drop happened, did it happen in '21 when we started to go south with the administration? Then how much is the 5% increase, not to go back, how much, if we go 5 cents, what is that in real dollars for our residents? And we also got two, also to Lawrence, also you're assuming off of 1%, but Lawrence has a lot of rentals, we're a lot of 2%. When we talked about this before, my board came in here, showed up, and started coming at us. So I'm just giving you.
Yeah, and again, I can only speak for what you can do, and the 5 cents would be 5 cents for every $100 of value that are, that are not.
Assessed value.
That are not at the 1% cap. There's multiple taxing districts, but for Lawrence, you have Indianapolis Lawrence and Lawrence outside. The Lawrence outside is $2.44 when you add up the library, the county, the schools, you know, I think there's some other special districts, and then Indianapolis Lawrence is $2.73. So you almost have two additional dollars before you guys even make a dent.
Okay, that's good.
And that's it, those are the 2024 rates. Now, in 2023, it was 2.45 and 2.74, so roughly the same, roughly a penny. So again, this is not, I'm not saying go up at 5 cents every, I'm just saying, pick a number and then hold the line. You could pick the number to be, you know what, let's just.
Why did you pick 5 cents?
I just picked 75 cents, because the highest was 78 cents. You had 74, 77, so it was in the 70s, and if you go to the next page, Madam Clerk, it was still nowhere near somebody like West Lafayette.
Right, but what's Indianapolis? You mentioned it, but you didn't post it.
The city of Indianapolis?
I thought you said we were about the same.
You go up one, why don't, that's Unigov, so it's the county and the city, so it's a little different. So it's hard to, you're also comparing yourself to the largest city in the state, and one of the largest.
Population, I understand, but our residents compare ourselves to the largest city in the state.
Well, let me give you a fact there, Counselor, because that is a valid point, and I'll tell you what the Indianapolis center total tax rate is, and it's $2.77, which is still higher than anything.
So the rates are different per township?
Correct. So you have to, I mean.
What's Lawrence Township, because that's where we live.
Oh, you want to know the township alone? Okay, give me one second, I got it pulled up.
Because you got to remember, in many of our districts, you live on one side of the street, you live in Lawrence, on the other side of the street, you live in Indianapolis, and then the neighbors start talking. So I'm just trying to vet this out.
Well, you have, you have to add them all up, Counselor. So again, so the township, just, again, the township, you're going to have to have the township plus the county plus the city, but the township, which is part of the equation, is a whopping, this can't be right, maybe it is, 1 cent.
Okay, good, that's good, good, good news. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
But the total budget of said township is a whopping 745, oh, for the general fund is $500,000. So they have $500,000 because their assessed value is roughly the same, but they're not funding police, fire, roads. So you know, you got to put things in perspective, that's why I try to benchmark cities with cities that have comparable services, and the township, they're.
I'm just curious.
Their budget is literally going to probably poor relief at the assessment.
Yeah, township government.
Which is completely different service.
Did you look at East Chicago? I thought they were always comparable in us in population.
No, but I'm happy to tell you what it is. I'm right here, I mean, I don't want to make it too much of a dig, we can have this separately, but what, that's Lake County, correct?
Yeah.
Lake.
Even though the Unigov stuff doesn't come into play, and I get it. That's it, we could talk.
No, 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 I have it open, and I can give it to you if you're just patient with me. Again, I just want to be respectful of everybody, and I'm happy to do this, and we can go down. East Chicago, their tax rate is $2.36.
Okay.
So if you're comparable to Chicago, to East Chicago, you're taxing roughly a fourth.
You know, they like to tax up there, Lake County.
So I'm just saying, if I added two, if you go back down one, Madam Clerk, it would be in between Mishawaka and South Bend, and closer to Terre Haute. Again.
The thing that concerns me about Mishawaka is it's not heavy industry. We don't have for tax.
Yeah, I'm just trying to show.
Yeah, I understand, but they have.
Yeah, if you want me, like, I'm, if, I challenge you all to tell me who you want to compare yourselves to, and I'm happy to do this exercise.
I understand, no, no, it's great, no, you did a great job, also, thank you so much.
Do you break this down by taxing districts? Because I know.
No, well, the taxing, you can't control the taxing district, because then you have no control over the township board, the schools, or the county. You can only, this is the rate that the fiscal body controls. So I'm only bringing forward what you control.
Right.
Okay, so that would be in taxing District 407 for the city of Lawrence.
It would, well, you have two, but if you were to look at.
And Indianapolis would be 400, and then I believe another taxing district in Indianapolis, Lawrence Township is 401.
Yeah, so for Lawrence, I can see 400, 401, and 407. 407, and I missed that one, is, sorry, thank you for bringing that one up, skip it, that's 270, nope, 244, so it's still in the. Oh, sorry, 407 is 257.
257?
257.54 for the city of Lawrence.
They are, but he's saying that they're paying for it.
Yeah, they're, I can, there were three, I apologize, I'm just, I pulled this up real time here and wasn't, you know, that's where the conversation went.
Okay.
But it's still very high, 250.
We got a finance committee meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, again, no actions requested today, it was just to give you guys all the information, allow the public to tell you their feedback, and then we will hopefully present something, the option to bring back a CUM cap fund and to move the leases into a debt service to bring it potentially to 75. And if the feedback is, we talked, go higher, go lower, keep it the same, we can adjust accordingly. Is that fair?
Thank you.
Great job, thank you.
Thank you.
Good information.
Any further discussion, questions?
That slide is available, it is electronically, okay.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Goodyear. Next on the agenda are comments from the administration.
Good evening, Counselors, thank you for your time. I've actually emailed everyone the Oster's presentation, so you should all be able to have it, and Oscar is CC on that, so if you have any direct questions, you can reach out to him, but also say you're more than welcome to reach out to myself, Zach, or the controller for the discussion. So yes, thank you for your time again. Just want to give a few general announcements. I previously mentioned that the administration is seeking to hire a communication director for city events. We have hired that person. Her name is Jamie Rurick, I may pronounce her last name wrong, I apologize. Jamie was the membership director at the Fort Ben YMCA. We have recruited her, and she has a wealth of knowledge and experience with community partners and hosting events. We're excited to have her, she's going to be a great asset to the city. So looking, look forward to working with Jamie a lot, and she may have some more events come down the pipeline this summer and fall, as we, I think we're now the third day in spring, so we're looking forward to that. Speaking of spring, Spring Fling is happening here on March 30th with the partnership with Lawrence, Matty Smiles and the Fort Benjamin YMCA. They'll be hosting our annual Spring Fling Easter Ed Con at Lawrence Community Park. It's from ages 3 to 10, residents can sign up on the Fort Ben YMCA website if you guys want to participate. Also too, we're in March, so it's Women's History Month. So this month, the city is recognizing several powerful women in the city of Lawrence, including police, fire, business leaders, and elected officials. So check out our Facebook page and our website, you might see some familiar faces. Also too, another big event coming up is the Total Eclipse, so I hope everyone will be there that Monday. Our headliner will be Queen Delphine, the Crown Jewels, so join us at the Lawrence Community Park on April 8th from 12:00 PM noon till 6:00 PM, as we bring you an afternoon of food, live music, family-friendly activities under the solar eclipse. Mission of this is free. I also want to thank the Greater Chamber, who's going to be providing the city of Lawrence and the public with some, so some glasses. So we secure 1,000 for city employees and their immediate family. Then also too, we'll be providing some the day of the Total Eclipse at Lawrence Community Park. But I'm also told that at stores, that people can buy their own if they so choose. So thank you for Brad and the Chamber and Purple Ribbon for providing those for us. Also too, just something that I've got some feedback regarding from Parks Department, excuse me, not Parks Department, Streets Department, DPW, and Police regarding new signage requests, regarding case counselors want to move forward with that. I think what would help us is that if we have a meeting to kind of decide what is enforceable by code and what neighborhood can put in themselves that's not enforceable, kind of like a slow down sign or kids at play sign comparative to what needs to be codified. like a slow down sign or kids at play sign comparative to what needs to be codified, that's adhered to NDOT and municipal code, like actual yield in a four-way stop sign, that does require the Council to move forward with. I think having the input of the Fire Department and DPW and Streets will be important. So I think if, if we can set up a meeting or have a conversation about how we want to move forward with that process, then I think will be helpful, and this is, you know, just an exchange, if we can kind of bundle those together, because I understand, Councilwoman Crone, you've got several requests you've reached out to me about, and Councilwoman Missouri, you had some thoughts about that as well, that if we could just have a process of how we can move forward on the administrative side and the council side, see what is enforceable or what, like I said, neighborhoods can do themselves, or if that's appropriate, and then that we can kind of bundle those and pass that, hopefully collectively through the Code Committee and get that taken care of. But I'm, I'm open to suggestions, I just want to say, if that's a, a process that you guys want to move forward with, we can certainly set that up and do that to make sure neighborhoods get the type of signage they need and they request it. Now, as a replacement of signs for damaged signs, we do have a process for that, just to simply go onto the website, DPW, and our team can just go out, our street team could go out and just get those replaced. Also too, after a meeting with Department Ted earlier this week, we are more than welcome to schedule tours with utilities, police, fire, or any other department that particularly new Counselors would like to participate in. I think this will be a great opportunity for Counselors to learn about each department, but also to very insightful, educational, especially when it comes around budget session in the fall. So you guys are more than welcome to participate in that. I talked to Scott, your legal counsel, that all of you can do that, you don't have to call the caucus for all of you to do that, it's actually an educational session, just like we did the AIM Conference, so you all can go together and participate in that type of tour and educational session with each department. And with that, the only department update I do have is that for the Street Department, Director Jim Henigan wanted to let you guys know that the hot mix is in, meaning that we will be filling the potholes here throughout the city, and will be, our Street Department crew is actively doing that now. So, with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. No comments? Okay, next on the agenda will be comments from the citizens.
There was none.
I hit the list. Any citizens wishing to, wish to speak, please approach the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, I'm Carrie Weiser, my address is forty-seven twenty-one Mahaffey Street. There's a lot of new faces up here, but I recognize him.
Can you pull the microphone down to you a little bit?
Are you saying I'm short?
Hard to hear you.
Sorry, I'll move. I'm nervous to be up here in the first place, and I actually, as Rick knows, shouldn't be up here as a Lawrence citizen and for our neighborhood. And the only reason why more of our neighbors, Rick's and mine, are not here is because I just found out about the meeting yesterday, and so I wanted to come, so we didn't have enough time to get people together. But we were here in twenty nineteen for a hearing for zoning for, I think it was a male youth home, I can't tell you all the details, it's been too long. We had the hearing, it came into the neighbors' favor. At that meeting, we addressed the issues of fighting, just stuff that we're not used to seeing in our neighborhood. It's old Lawrence, we live at forty-seventh and Franklin, and where the old Lawrence Elementary used to be. Me and my brother, we've lived in Lawrence for forty-six years, my mother is still in the same house, and I'm fortunate to have two sons that live in the neighborhood with me also. So, and then I have a nephew that lives in the neighborhood. Now, three of us live directly across the street from this building, I can't even tell you what kind, what the business is, but since January, we have dealt with horrible, horrible employees. I had an altercation with one of them, and this man was a big man, but I suddenly became seven foot tall, five hundred pounds. But that's what I mean, that I should not be here. This company, I, this man, from the time he gets and turns onto forty-seventh from Franklin Road, I've been at that stop sign, when he comes, he floors it fifty miles an hour. It's like Duke's Hazard, him flying over the railroad tracks, he flies through, I'm telling you, it's fifty miles an hour, all the way down to this old daycare. Rick can testify to that, every neighbor can testify to that. These workers are cussing us out, let me just walk outside. One neighbor, he said, "Go back in your house," and he's not very nice with his words. He called me a few names yesterday, but I made one for him too, and I'm not necessarily proud of that, but I came down to his level, and I don't like that. That's why I'm here. I'm asking for all of your help. This man that owns the business, that's Ben Matthews, we don't care. We are glad that he wants to help people, whatever it is. We didn't knock that the last hearing, but six months after that hearing, it went to, I believe it's called eminent domain, so it happened anyways. And now, since it's through Indianapolis, we're stuck with this. Since January, there was, police called to the place where they were housing two young men, one was eighteen, one was twelve. The eighteen-year-old beat the living hell out of that twelve-year-old. He had to go to the hospital, and I'm not talking little, he beat him. And we asked for that not to happen from this man, because we knew it would be in our front yard. My nephew lives across the street, directly across from the parking lot, when the man flies down the road, he floors it in the parking lot so that he can fishtail, and the rocks hit his house. I don't want to be cussed at no more in my neighborhood that I've lived in for forty-six years. I've had my house for twenty-six. My boys just moved out into their home. My mother has been there for forty-six years. Our neighborhood is not bad. We get a lot of surrounding things as problems as everybody else does, but it's not our neighborhood, it's people that don't live there. But for somebody that we now have to share our neighborhood with, we can't have that. They can not like us all they want, but they have to respect our neighborhood and our little kids. Two of the stop signs he stops at are bus stops, and he flies through anytime between six-thirty in the morning to nine o'clock in the morning. Bus stops.
Forty-seventh.
So I am here pleading for you, I don't know what to do. I did speak to Captain Cantrell, they're gonna try and put up stings, but this man has three vehicles that we know of. Our hands are tied as citizens, I need your help, all my neighbors need your help. I don't know what to do. I tried to talk to the boss, and that's when I got handed a mouthful of nasty, nasty words. And I did give him a name, and I did take pictures of his license plate, but that ain't gonna do nothing. It's the business, I don't know, I don't know what to do. But I do appreciate you hearing me, and I hope that something can be done. We don't want to have a police presence in our neighborhood, that, that's not great, but if we have to, so be it. We never wanted that.
Which place is it?
Never wanted it. But we're stuck with it. So, thank you for letting me say my piece.
Thank you.
Thank you.
She's wise.
Madam President, in fact, just like to respond to this situation, I've told my fellow Counselors about it, this is right across the street from my house. I never thought, in my years of living in Lawrence, that I would see a penal institution set up shop in a residential neighborhood. I would probably believe that if it had been in some other location in Lawrence, it might have been a little bit more, more of a problem than it is where, you know, it's in the old part of Lawrence. But just so everybody knows, I have contacted the administration, and I was sent to Indianapolis, and this company apparently has somehow convinced the people downtown Indianapolis that if the building was empty for five years, that they can basically open up shop and do what they want. And I talked to the people downtown, and they said that they probably may not have done right by the city of Lawrence or this neighborhood, but they, apparently, there's no, there's no recourse, according to this man. So I don't have the connections with Indianapolis like maybe others in this city might have, but yeah, I agree, we need, this, this neighborhood needs help. This, this situation with this, with this, I guess, halfway house, penal institution, whatever you want to call it, it, it shouldn't be where it is, so, but I have exhausted all my efforts to try to do something about it. And, you know, now I understand we're supposedly looking for a lobbyist, and maybe the lobbyist is gonna fix all the problems, but it seems like to me that, you know, there, there could be a more direct solution to this problem. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilor Wells. Next.
We're on the corner of forty-seventh and-
We're Kristen, and this is, she's gonna be shy now, this is Aiden B. Clark, now he's hiding. Did you want to try to, okay. We are with Liz, Liz had proposed our stop sign at Chadworth Court in Kensington Farms. We just have, coming from Kensington Commons around that corner, there's a lot of trees there, kind of blocks the road, so people have been coming around that a little fast, and we have two boys and a girl, and our two boys are bike riders, and we've had several instances over the past couple of years with our bike riders, sorry, with our bike riders who, by the time they get pedaling, we have a car kind of coming around that corner really fast. So we just wanted to kind of make that a four-way stop outside of Chadworth Court. We had our older neighbor actually almost get hit by a car the other day, so just kind of something to give somebody a little cause to slow down, so they're not always flying around that corner, and then we have the playground right there too as well, so. Okay, he doesn't want to say anything anymore, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Is there anyone else? I don't think there's anyone else.
Other people's names on the list before mine.
Amy Alaf.
Amy Alaf, yeah.
Yeah.
Daniel Rapp, fifty-seven eighteen Waldenwood Drive. My comment is relationship to the item on the agenda, ratification of contracts. And my initial thing was transparency, because ratification of contracts means that they've been negotiated and there's some type of approval process. And I was wanting to know for transparency reasons, what are these contracts, quote, vendor, address, dollar amount? I was looking for transparency, and I did not hear any transparency tonight, nor did I get a good feeling as far as what you people meant by ratification of contracts on the agenda. I heard in comment that these were referred to Finance Committee to be paid, and that means that these contracts are already approved, and we're talking about making payments. So I guess I'm looking for clarification to be put into the minutes of this session to explain what you're doing, what the public needs to know in reference to transparency and clarification of ratification of these contracts. That was my thought. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
My name is Corey Halcom, eighty-three oh one, East Forty-seventh Street, live in the Happy Face House, as most of you might know. This is in regards to the address at eighty-four oh five, which has no name on it, along with Rick Wells, I live in the same neighborhood. This gentleman that is in our neighborhood and terrorizing the people there, and I do say terrorizing, because he is literally doing fifty miles an hour without stopping at any stop signs. At this point in time, like my sister, and this is my sister back there, I'm asking for help, because I have called the police at least ten times, and they are not doing anything. I'm aware of almost four accidents that this guy has almost caused, one including myself, one including Brown's Oils, which is one block north of us, one with the Moleman's, who does roadway cleanup and maintenance for the city and the state both. His son informed me that he had to jackknife his truck on Mahaffey Street to keep from this guy hitting him. Our neighborhood is now a dangerous place to live. I'm asking for something to be done. Myself, I'm disabled, I have a heart condition, I'm former military, United States Air Force, I'm also a former truck driver. At this point in time, I've exhausted what I know to do. I'm asking for all nine of our city council members to do something about this, because at this point in time, I really don't know what to do. I'm thankful for Rick Wells, because if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't know about doing this stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is adjournment. We have a motion for adjournment. Thank you, Councilor Wells and Councilor Jennings. Any discussions? We can now vote. Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It was unanimous.